Good evening, Commissioner. We'll come to order. We will begin the consent agenda for Monday, September 18, 2023, 6:00. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and that was requested by Mayor Frank. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Vowell. Shayla, would you like to come up? Do you have someone else with you?
Sheila.
Oh, okay, okay. And I'll have to get you pretty paper. It wasn't... We were out of it, so I'll get that to you with the ribbon. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than 1,100 lives lost in Tennessee each year, and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in Tennessee, the third leading cause of death among youth and young adults ages 10 to 24, as well as the second leading cause of death of adults ages 35 to 44, and the sixth leading cause of death for adults ages 45 to 54. And whereas more than three lives a day are lost to suicide in Tennessee, which means we lose 21 Tennesseans each week and 97 people per month. And whereas Tennessee veterans, active-duty military, and National Guardsmen face a disproportionate risk as compared to the general population, with more dying from suicide than combat -- and I'm sorry, disproportionate risk. Whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide or those who have attempted suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by Governor Bill Lee, and the Tennessee Legislature has declared teen suicide prevention as a state priority in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network to implement the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas Tennessee is a national leader in the effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan. And whereas the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention, and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, and best practices for professionals in the United States. And whereas the Governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of this Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need an occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas we encourage all Tennesseans to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now, therefore, we, members of the Anderson County Commission and County Mayor Terry Frank, do hereby proclaim September of 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Anderson County, and do urge all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy. And thank you to Shayla and Allies for Substance Abuse Prevention for making sure that we remember that this is an important issue in our state and community, and for pushing forward with this proclamation. And Shayla, feel free to comment.
Sure. I will just say thank you on behalf of TSPN. We are very thankful for our partnership with them and what we can do to partner also with our schools and our school districts to raise awareness about suicide prevention and how we can reduce that with our youth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shayla. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the rezoning of the property at 1671 Lake City Highway Clinton, Parcel 1100, Tax Map 053, from C1, General Commercial District, to I1, Light Industrial District. Is anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on the public hearing? Hello, sir. If you would, state your name and your address, please, and we'll give you three minutes to speak.
Sure, absolutely. So, good evening, Commissioner. I'm Michael Vogel, founder and CEO of Evolve Renewable Materials. So, we are based in Oak Ridge, 159 Mitchell Road in Oak Ridge. That's where we're currently developing our R&amp;D office. We're developing industry-leading technology here in Oak Ridge. Essentially, our goal as a company is to sustainably electrify the United States through the creation of our industry-leading low emissions, green lithium battery recycling technology, as I said, being developed right here in Anderson County. We're creating a circular economy here in Tennessee to support the shift to electrification to build local battery supply chain capability and capacity for recycled battery anode and cathode materials, which are going to go back into the manufacture of new batteries. Tennessee and Anderson County is a favorable location for our business due to the existing scientific community, proximity to the eastern seaboard of the United States, corporate tax provisions, and battery manufacturing industry being developed here in Tennessee. We are pleased to be creating clean jobs here in Anderson County, and the rezoning of the said property, which we are addressing here tonight, will enable our business to commence operations with more jobs to be created as we continue to grow. The said property will be designated as our EPA-registered universal waste warehouse facility for the sole purpose of sorting and receiving end-of-life batteries prior to these batteries being shipped to our process facility in Oak Ridge. Over the next five years, we estimate $30 million in revenues from our Oak Ridge and the proposed Clinton facility, which is the first phase of our operations essentially here. But we have plans to build our first recycling hub, which is in development. And essentially, our current facility in Oak Ridge and this proposed facility here in Clinton is the first phase of our operations and is going to enable us to sustainably grow and scale up, creating even more jobs and building capacity in the state. So, essentially, this property is essential for our ongoing operations, and the support, I guess, in this rezoning would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Allen.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vogel.
Mr. Vogel.
Sorry.
Yeah. How many do you employ in Oak Ridge?
In Oak Ridge, right now, we have 10 full-time employees.
Yeah. And how many do you expect to employ once you get this property?
Yeah, so with the Clinton property, next year, we estimate we're going to have another five to 10 employees coming on board.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. And that's going to continue to grow as we continue to expand operations. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any further questions for Mr. Vogel? Here it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else here tonight wishing to speak on the rezoning hearing? If not, we will declare the public hearing closed. There's nothing left on the consent agenda tonight. Anything left to come before us? Then we will be in recess till the 6:30 agenda.
Let's talk trash because we are so tired of being tossed out onto our beautiful Tennessee roadways. It hurts and it's UGLY. Come on, join the movement at nobodytrashestennesse.com. Brought to you by the Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Saving lives means staying informed. Knowing the dangers of using counterfeit prescription pills can help those you care about and keep our community safe. As a parent, educator, neighbor, or friend, we all play a role in building safe and healthy futures for ourselves and our loved ones. Do your part. Take the first step today. Visit getsmartaboutdrugs.com to access education, prevention, and treatment resources. Counterfeit prescription pills laced with fentanyl are deadly. Be their protector, be informed. Visit getsmartaboutdrugs.com.
Environmental.
All right, let's call the regular meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, Monday, September 18th, 2023, meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer by Commissioner Wells and a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Vandergriff.
Please bow with me. Our heavenly Father, we give thee thanks for this glorious day you've given us, for the sun that's shining, for the river that flows through our county, for all the blessings you've given to each of us in this commission, in this room here, and Lord, in this nation. We ask that you continue to guide us, allow us to be lights on the hill, and our light that does shine, let it be a representation of your glory and nothing good of our own accord. As servants of the people, Lord, we have a burden, not only as servants of you, but as those who represent all walks of life in our community. Every race, creed, every person that lives and breathes, pays their taxes, and wakes up in the morning with hopes of a better life, just as we all do. We know we're worthless sinners, Lord, but we also know that we have a hope of glory through the redemption and the death and resurrection of your son, Jesus Christ. And for that, Lord, we give thee thanks. We thank you for the beautiful rain you gave us over the weekend, Lord, and we desperately pray for more. It's the nourishment of our life, and it's what allows us to keep going each day. Please, Lord, watch over this meeting. Allow us to all work together in unity to move forward for the good of the county. Thank you for this chairman that has served us over the last year. We ask that you continue to bless him and his family and his ability to lead. And, Lord, whoever should be elected to represent and lead our county moving forward, Lord, may we have peace, may we have unity between those that decide to run, and may you give your strength, give your guidance, and give humility to that individual. We thank you for all these things, Lord. We humbly pray that we wake to see tomorrow, and if not, Lord, we look forward to a day better. And in Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. If anyone would like to speak, address commission, you can do so now. Just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Heaton, and I live here in Clinton. And I'm not coming before y'all this evening as a member of a political party or a political organization. I'm coming before y'all this evening as a concerned citizen to talk about what happened during the library board meeting on September 14th, 2023. I watched the library board meeting, and I was shocked when I seen what decision they made regarding the pornographic books in our tax-funded libraries. I couldn't believe that the library board sought the advice of the law director and then completely ignored his recommendations on restricting these pornographic books. The library board is going to get Anderson County sued for ignoring the great citizens of Anderson County and the law director's legal opinion. So I'm coming before y'all tonight to ask that the Anderson County Commission abolish the library board so that you all can get this situation under control. I would hate to see Anderson County get sued because of the library board ignoring the law and the law director's legal opinion. This is not a political issue. This is about my county tax dollars having to be used to fight a future lawsuit that could be prevented by listening to the law director's legal opinion on this situation. I'm asking as a lifelong citizen of Anderson County to please enforce the law and to do your job as county commissioners. As far as I know, the Anderson County Commission has authority over the library board, not the other way around. I just don't understand why you all feel like you have to ignore this situation. This is involving county tax dollars. If Anderson County gets sued because of the library board's decision, I think that the members of the library board and the librarians should pay for their own representation in court. This situation has gotten way out of control because y'all have decided to ignore this situation. So I'm asking that y'all take control of this situation and abolish the library board so that y'all can enforce the law before this situation gets even worse. And I'll say, I'll say one more thing real quick. Some of the people that I've been talking to about this book issue, they've, they've told me that especially the ones that are really graphic, the books, they, they want them removed. Like, they want them out of the libraries, like the real graphic ones. And a lot, some of them are afraid to come before the library board or county commission because they're afraid they're gonna get jumped on and screamed at and stuff because that's, some of that, a little bit of that has been happening lately. And I think that, you know, I wish that some of y'all and some of the members of the library board would treat the citizens of Anderson County with a little more respect. And that's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
Jay, just to clarify, and I, I don't want to stop anybody else from speaking, but my understanding from the library board when I was there, your recommendation was if we had any books that violated the obscenity laws, that's what would need to be restricted. And from what we understood with the sheriff and the DA's analysis, we didn't have any books that fit that category right now. Is that right?
Well, this is the big distinction. The DA is looking at it from a criminal prosecution standpoint. If you look at his letter, he talks about the potential of a jury trial and that it would be hard to get a conviction. The sheriff is also looking at it from criminal prosecution. As we all know from our civics class years ago, criminal prosecution standard is beyond a reasonable doubt. I look at it from a civil case perspective, whether it come to the county as a declaratory judgment action or lawsuit with damages, and that's not beyond a reasonable doubt. Okay, that's preponderance of evidence. In Tennessee, that can be just 51% at fault. So I would be very careful when you distinguish the two. They're distinguishable. One doesn't tie with the other. A criminal prosecution is not the same as a civil lawsuit. So please understand that. I'm looking at it from the safest perspective of the county. I don't want to see a lawsuit. It requires a lot of work, my office, a lot of funds from the county commission, and we don't want to see that. But I think that's the biggest distinction between my position on it and that of the sheriff and that of General Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address commission?
My name is Deborah Heaton, and I live here in Clinton, and I'm also secretary of the Anderson County GOP. Commissioners, something needs to be done about these obscene books. This is an issue. It should have been resolved a long time ago. It's went on way too long. As a taxpayer, I'm sick and tired of our local government not doing their job. The library board is blatantly breaking the law. Does the Anderson County Commission have any authority over this rogue library board? If so, the Anderson County Commission needs to step in and take care of this matter before the county gets sued. If the county gets sued as a taxpayer, I don't feel that we should have to pay for legal fees because the library board and the librarians aren't doing their job and they are blatantly breaking the law. Also, as a member of the Republican Party, I feel that fellow Republicans should stand by and support Commissioner Anthony Allen and his efforts on tackling these issues. Commissioner Allen, I would like to personally thank you for your efforts in protecting our children in this community from this stuff that's going on. Thank you so much.
Did anyone else want to address commission?
My name is Nate Flaws. I don't mind if y'all hand these around to each other while you're checking these, listening here. It's actually this one and this one. So if you want to hand those down, sir, I'm here to protect as well, Mr. Allen, from what I appear to be, what I, what I, in my estimation, is harassment on this board that is actually supposed to be a team. You'll see a post put out by Stefan Varan that is highly insulting, and it is not only aimed at him, but it is aimed at anybody who has attempted to advise him or anybody who attempted, who, who has brought information in, in this respect to prepare this case for the people. I have personally been at this for about a year because I had been investigating in my own regard the same activist groups that caused this problem in the beginning. I submitted that, that recording to y'all about how they actively stated, the library board members, that they were going to go around any recommendation you made by putting other worse books on the library shelves for children, and you wouldn't even know about it, deign you were to pull a couple of them off. This was submitted into evidence early in February. Now, aside from the fact that I have been run off the road, my family has been threatened, my house has been vandalized, simply because I'm attempting to upgrade this knowledge that we have here about what has been going on, I adjour thee as a group to work as a team to represent your constituents on this issue. Instead of turning aside or boycotting and walking out, simply turn on the television, and you've got Moms for Liberty, soccer moms risking their own societal reputation to come and say the same thing in every city across this state and country. Instead of refusing to deal with the, and look at the evidence I've supplied and had been advising with, and shut this down, why don't y'all act as a team and evaluate the evidence and not let certain individuals castigate and ruin the reputation of the man who has been brave enough to officially bring it forward upon advisement by certain individuals? So that is what I have to say, and I feel like that is a very noble thing to consider. That's why I'm bringing it to you. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come before commission? Any item on or off the agenda? If not, let's move on to approval and correction of agendas. We'll start with the consent agenda. Commissioner Vandergriff.
Chairman, could we add the inventory, the annual inventory for the highway department to the consent agenda?
Any other changes or corrections to the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve as amended, Commissioner Wondell? Got a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the approval of the regular agenda. Any additions, corrections to the regular agenda? Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the operations agenda. I see it's on the consent agenda. I guess my question is, do I need to pull it from the consent agenda to just ask a question? I'm not wanting to make any motions or anything. I mean, if you're okay with it and the chairman of the operations committee is okay with it, I'll just ask the question when it comes to that point. Is that all right?
I think, yeah. Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, I was, under the number 11, the care advisor report, I don't know if there's folks here, but for the sake of expediency, do we want to put that under fire commission report?
Just move that, move that to behind the, after the fire commission report? Is that, is that okay with you, Commissioner Wondell?
Actually, I don't really think we had any motions, per se. I think we can just accept it as is. We're having another meeting next month, and I think the mayor, she's got availability, and some of the staff is gonna show up, and we're gonna address some issues. So if it's all right with the board, we'll just add it, and no discussions, fine with me. Submit the report as presented, I guess.
Okay. Commissioner Allen, your motion to approve as, as it stands, all right, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any other discussion on the regular agenda? If not, let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to item five, public hearing report. Vice Chairman Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a public hearing this evening at six o'clock for the rezoning property at 1671 Lake City Highway, Clinton, parcel 111. I think I may have misspoke that earlier. Map 053 from C1, General Commercial District, to I-1 Light Industrial District. Mr. Michael Bogel spoke at that public hearing. Mr. Chairman gave us information on the purpose of the future use of that site. There was no one who spoke in opposition to that. The public hearing was then adjourned.
We got a motion by Commissioner Isbell to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any other discussion on the rezoning? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just end by saying I appreciate the opportunity that commissioners have given me over the last three years to serve as your vice chairman. It has been a learning experience that I will not soon forget, and I look forward to continue to work with you all over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, election of chairman and vice chairman. And I just want to say, I, this has been an honor to be chairman for the last three years. I think it's a good time to move on. And I got elected chairman in a hybrid meeting. We were in the middle of COVID. That was, that was everybody's first pandemic. And I know we had criticism from some people thinking we did too much and some people thinking we didn't do enough. And we were just trying to do the best we could for the county. And I, I think we, we accomplished that. We, thanks to Brian and his team, we, we had really successful virtual meetings and kept the, kept the government locally going and kept everything moving and, and voted remotely. And we, we kind of set the, set the standard, set the bar high for the, the state and the country during that time. I guess my only advice to whoever takes over, we vote, we vote on, I don't, I haven't really counted up how many, how many votes we take in an average meeting. Most of the time, it seems like we're unanimous. We seem to agree more than we disagree. So I, I would hope everyone's careful not to, to, it, it seems like sometimes when something gets contentious, we, we weaponize some of our parliamentary procedures with the deferral motions or referral motions or amendments to motions. And it's okay to vote no if you don't like the motion and just move on. We don't have to necessarily drag it out. But I would suggest being mindful of that. And I would, I would also suggest that, that all of us, as we go into 2024, I think the national, I think national political discussions with, with elections and trials and that sort of thing, there's, there's gonna be a lot of noise. But I, I think we can either choose to kind of let that, let that in here at the local level and kind of get distracted, or we can kind of just let that happen and focus on what we were elected to do here locally and kind of keep the government moving like we did during the pandemic. And I, I think that, that would serve us all well, and it would serve our, our county and our constituents well, too. So with that, thank you, and we'll open the floor up for nominations for chairman. Commissioner Isbell.
Chairman, I would like to nominate Vice Chairman Shane Vowell for chairman.
Commissioner Allen. You have any other nominations for chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Tyler Mays for chairman.
Tyler Mays. Commissioner Palmer? Oh, cancel, okay. Any other nominations for chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. McCainy.
McCainy, was that, was that what Commissioner White was gonna? That was, okay. Do we have any other nominations for chairman? Do we have any nominations from the floor? All right. Do we need to cease nominations, or do we just need to proceed to the vote? Do we need to cease nominations, or do we just need to proceed to the vote?
I'll make the nomination cease and we begin the election.
Got a, I got a motion and a second to cease nominations and accept those three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Jeff, whenever you're ready. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've sat up here a few times and had folks apply for positions, fill positions, fill vacancies. We have three nominations. I'd like to ask some questions. I, I don't want to challenge nobody, I just want to ask a basic, basic question of each candidate, like we do others when they put their hat in, and I'd like to hear, you know, some responses before, before we move forward. So my first question, if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, is that acceptable?
Pleasure of the commission. Is that all right? Yep.
I guess my first question is, all three, I assume, accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Then, my next question is, if elected chairman, what is your goal should you be elected as chairman for this body? That, that's, that's it.
Take an order of the nomination committee, chairman, vice chairman Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. I believe the goal of the chair is to keep the meetings efficient, keep the meetings flowing, while at the same time respecting the rights of the citizens to come and speak, while also respecting the rights of the commissioners who represent those constituents to speak. As Chairman Anderson said, we do have some issues on occasion that become pretty contentious, that everybody has an opinion on, and we don't want to drown out any one person or one group's opinion, but at the same time, we do need to maintain efficiency. I believe all of us who are vying for this chair would agree on that. I think each of us have different roads to get to the same place that we want to take. I've made it no secret that I think the committee level would probably shorten our full commission meetings. If more issues could be handled on the committee level, I would certainly emphasize that, but yet at the same time, making sure that every commissioner has their right to represent their constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty similar to Commissioner Vowell, I see this position in the role on a full commission night as facilitating. There are sixteen of us up here with sixteen different opinions, and this individual needs to respect all sixteen and understand that we're not, we may vote a certain way, but we don't project picking sides. We, we allow the audience to come up, to share what's on their mind and what's on their heart, anything that we can do better, but also I see the chairman as being able to protect the sixteen of us from any direct or in kind of inflammatory comments, to keep this meeting conducted as a business meeting, to hold decorum, to ensure that everything that we do is proper and professional. In the, in the other areas that I'm talking about, meeting proficiency and efficiency, is I think that over the years, that commission has done a really good job of laying out really good rules. We also have TCA and Roberts Rules of Order, but making sure that we adhere to those rules and follow those rules, even sometimes when it's a little uncomfortable, even when Commissioner Foster wants to talk for the third time, you know, making sure that we, that we hold, hold true to those standards. And then just representing this body if we're ever in a position, whether it's handing out a scholarship in front of the media, or just anywhere, that we represent this body with, with dignity and with class, and that whoever is elected, and I think we've got three really good options tonight, and just making you guys proud anytime that we get to stand in front of someone and represent this body.
Right. Well, I'll agree with both of them. They both are the mouthful, but as, as I, I served as chairman one term in the past forty years, and I said then that I would be fair, but I would be firm, and I think the, the chairman does have to be firm at times, and, and, but I also think he should be fair, and that's what I promise to do, to be fair.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank all three of them. Thank you for letting me ask the question. All three of them, I consider friends, and as Commissioner Mays said, I agree, no matter who gets it, I'll support. I just don't want the other two, whoever I vote for, to feel like it's a vote against them, because it's not. We're a team, and I hope that continues, and I'll just end it with, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the way you've handled things the last three years. You've been a leader, you've stood up to things when there are tough issues. As many have said, it's not always acceptable to some, and we understand that, but as sixteen commissioners around this table, our goal is to be united, help work with the mayor and the staff and our employees and all the departments, and, and I think we've got a great county, and I'm not ashamed of anything we stand for or anything we've done. I'm proud of the way we are. I'm proud of everything we do. We make mistakes, we learn from it, so I'm looking forward to the vote, and I appreciate the answers all three of you gave, and whoever's nominated, I'll be supporting 100%. Thank you.
Then, after we, after we've elected both the chairman and vice chairman, we'll need to take about a five-minute recess, so Brian can switch the screen and everything over. Yes, and it will take, it will take nine votes to get elected, and we'll do the same, the elimination in the first round with the low, whoever gets the lowest votes gets eliminated in round one if it goes to another round.
I'm going to read them out, and the net's going to mark them and tally them. Commissioner McCamey, no vote. Commissioner Varan, Robert McCamey. Commissioner Wales, Mays. Commissioner Vandergriff, Mays. Commissioner Isabel, Vowell. Commissioner Beauchamp, Mays. Voted for Vowell. Commissioner White, McCamey. Commissioner Foster, Mays. Commissioner Palmer, Mays. Commissioner Mays, Mays. Commissioner Smallridge, Mays. Commissioner Anderson, Mays. And Commissioner Vowell, Vowell. You what? Which one? Miss two. Did you just, did you not sign it Tracy by chance? Yeah, you put, somebody put Robert, but didn't say, it should have been this commissioner's signature and then the ballot.
Yeah, I didn't sign it, I had to execute the signature.
At least it's not a hanging Chad, though, right? Remember those?
I'll scratch out his name and put my name there. I've only been doing this once. My mistake. That's where he thought.
Yeah, and then I had another one, I was waiting a minute.
You got two votes.
Yeah. Tracy, did you get Tracy?
Okay, we have Commissioner Mays with eight, Vowell with three, and McCamey with four.
Commissioner Wales, Mays. Commissioner Varan, Mays. Commissioner Vandergriff, Mays. Commissioner Waddell, McCamey. Commissioner Foster, Mays. Commissioner Palmer, Mays. Commissioner Mays, Mays. Commissioner Smallridge, Mays. Commissioner McCamey, McCamey. Commissioner Anderson, Mays. Commissioner Vowell, Mays. Commissioner Beauchamp's, Mays. Commissioner Isabel, McCamey.
Okay, Commissioner Mays has ten and McCamey has five.
Congratulations. Chairman Mays?
Do you want me to keep, keep rolling with the?
Move over there.
I haven't said a proper goodbye to him.
Thank you.
So is the first week of business calling a recess?
We got to do vice chairman. I'll just back and send my name.
Sorry about this. All right, first, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. Excited to be in this position, but I know that we are better when we're all together, so I look forward to the next year working with everyone as we continue to move the county It's a little warmer over here, Josh.
It can get hot at times.
All right, we will move on with the election of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chairman? Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Vandergriff.
Commissioner Vandergriff? Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner.
Palmer? So we have a nomination for Commissioner Palmer. Any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination cease.
We have all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? All right.
I think I'd like to decline that nomination. As much as I appreciate it, I think I'd like to not be considered. Is that okay? I think that Commissioner Vandergriff will do a great job. Thank you so much, though.
Would the motion approved, we're good to back her out? All right, we got a motion, Commissioner McCamey.
I'd like to make a motion that Shelley Vandergriff, Commissioner Shelley Vandergriff be elected by acclamation.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Isbell. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. At this time, we're going to take a fifteen-minute recess to, to get everything sorted out. We will, it is about seven twenty-five, we will. We will get back. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. Let's talk trash because we are so tired of being tossed out onto our beautiful Tennessee roadways. It hurts and it's UGLR. Come on, join the movement at nobodiesrashestennesseeyou. All right. All right, we'll call the meeting back to your order. First, and I meant to do this before the break, but selecting a parliamentarian, definitely something that's an important position. And I, you know, just talked to Commissioner McCamey. He is, would like to not be in that role, but I would like to appoint, if that's the right word, appoint, Michael Foster to serve in that capacity. I don't know if that needs to be a motion or... Okay, all right, so Commissioner Foster to serve as parliamentarian. No, but I do want to thank Commissioner McCamey. He may be moving across the aisle, but he is the de facto parliamentarian emeritus. We can give him all kinds of titles. All right, we go ahead, are we good to move? We good to go? All right, we're going to go to, move on to committee reports. First, we got purchasing report, Robbie Holbrook, finance director.
And congratulations on your.
Thank you.
And to Commissioner Vandergriff and Commissioner Foster parliamentarian. All right, on the purchasing agenda, there were two contracts approved by the law director, Ellison Sanitary Supply and Norvex Supply both janitorial supplies for the Board of Education and EMS.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is that to prove as a group? All right, second by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, under section B, contracts pending law director approval, which both have been approved by the law director now, Ellison.
Should have been a board vote? I thought it was only, for correction, is it, I thought it was appropriation of money would be a board vote. So do the contracts that we just voted on need to be a board vote as well?
They always have been a board vote, I didn't notice that you did.
We'll just, we'll keep it as a board vote then.
All right.
Then Commissioner Smallridge, if you'll second. Go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, was that for section A or B?
That was the section A.
Okay, on section B, there were contracts pending law director approval, there were two, Ellison Sanitary Supply, it's a gym floor maintenance, Board of Education contract, and Pitney Bowes for the Health Department.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Waddell, second by Commissioner McCamey, any discussion? Commissioner Varan.
Gym floor maintenance, is this part of the county school budget or the county budget?
It would be the county school budget.
County school?
The Board of Education, yes sir.
Any other? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, there was no business under section C, other business, under new business, there were, the first was Lamar contract for the Tourism Department. I'm going to take these individually too.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Isbell, Commissioner Waddell.
Thank you, Chairman. Jay, I got a question on this, I'm going to support everything, I just, the new TCA code come out that said we have to give forty-eight hours advance notice, I noticed these items were kind of added during the meeting. Is that allowable, what's, I just wanted to get your guidance.
Yes, the county commission, county legislative body, can create rules that allows things to be added to the agenda. We have a rule that allows things to be added to the agenda.
And it's not...
That's not a firm in concrete, although I'd like for us to think of that, that'll hold down, but there's going to be emergency cases in the county. The statute allows us to create rules, and we have a rule in place that allows us to add to the agenda.
Okay, I just, one minute, you know, I heard a lot of discussion the last couple of months about this new TCA code, about having to have it published forty-eight hours in advance and two weeks' notice on the agenda, and, you know, it kind of gets in conflict with that state law, I guess.
Very good question.
So, Mr. Chairman, again, I'm going to support this, I'm not debating that point. I just wanted to bring that up, it's something we might want to add to the Rules Committee to address, to, but are you saying we have a...
We have a rule in place that allows...
To cover that?
...to be added to the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Foster, you're recognized.
And these were added in committee?
They were added before the purchasing committee.
Right, not, you're talking about for committees, too?
Yeah, my understanding was, according to TCA, it has to be on the agenda for forty-eight hours for the public to see, so, but, you know, I don't know what it means if something's pressing, if we, it sounds like we have a rule to allow it. I just don't want to be in conflict with the state law at all.
There's two, that's, again, this is a great segue, it is, but there's two laws that we're talking about here. The one forty-eight hour law is for the agenda, and that applies to the local legislative body. That's this body right here. The other one that requires a citizen comments applies to any governing body, which is, we have numerous governing bodies, including this body. So that's how that shakes out.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. The second business item under, or new business, was the CDBG grant. We've since found out that does not have to be approved by commission to extend that for a year, so I'm taking that off the agenda for tonight. It was approved in purchasing, but Jay's, since then, Jay's made a ruling that it does not have to be approved by commission. And the third item was a...
Commissioner Wondell.
Robbie, I understand it don't have to be on there, but I would like to know, what is the CDBG grant we're talking about?
It's a water, it's a grant for a water line, to extend the water line in, I think, Bryceville area? No?
Savage Gardens is?
Yes, that's the, correct, that's the one.
I just wanted to bring that up, thank you. Appreciate it.
We've had it for several years, but we still haven't, so we're extending another year.
Awesome.
Okay, and the third item on, under new business, was the TNTP contract for the Board of Education. It was deferred to the next purchasing meeting, but Dr. Parrott would like to make a couple of comments if he could about that.
Okay, one second, we have a motion in a second. What would your motion be, Mr., Commissioner Wondell?
To support this request for contract number twenty-four dash zero zero three nine. Go ahead.
Yep, so what happened is, the state called and had extra money, and they said, hey, we're going to give you a grant for two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to have a company come in and help us when we start doing our new English language curriculum and high-quality curriculum. So they give us the money, and in turn, we get a PO, and we pay TNTP, so there's no cost to it. We just have to get it done so we can get that contract signed, so, and I apologize for not being at the purchasing committee, I was out of town.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. We have a motion in a second for approval. Any questions or comments for Dr. Parrott? Commissioner Foster?
So it got deferred in purchasing, but we're taking it up?
They had some questions in purchasing, and there was nobody from the School Department there to answer those questions, and Catherine and I couldn't, because it was kind of added late. And Dr. Parrott, they've since explained it's a grant, we could lose this grant funding if we can't get it approved by a certain date, which there's some time restrictions on it.
All right, Commissioner Palmer, you're recognized.
Do we know what the time restrictions are?
September.
September?
This month, yes, ma'am.
And so, is this the one for the, never mind, thank you, I answered my own question, thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
That's all I have in the purchasing agenda.
All right, thank you.
Okay, in the budget agenda, Group Two appropriations from the School Department, there were four of them. I can take individually, answer any questions, approve as a group, however y'all would like to proceed.
We have a motion on the floor, as a group, Mr.?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner McCamey.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to do the cash and fund balance and all that other stuff before.
We'll get to it. Any questions for Robbie on this group? All right, go to the board and vote. Motion passes, now the cash and fund balance.
Yeah, I do this every month, and I still find ways to mess up. So, the cash and fund balance for ending August thirtieth of 2023, the general fund, unassigned fund balance, ten point eight million, total fund balance seventeen million six sixty-eight, three thirty-three, cash sixteen million eighty-five thousand nine thirty-five. The school fund balance, ten million twenty-five thousand two sixty-one, cash nine point seven million. Of course, all these numbers are unaudited. Cash is correct, but the, the fund balances are not audited yet, so those could change with audit. Any questions on the cash and fund balance? Okay, sales tax report, the sales tax as a whole is up six percent in the month of July, four million nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. County's portion, four hundred ninety-nine, six thirty-seven, sixty, was down a little bit from last July, but still, every month this, every month this calendar year, we have been up at least five percent, so, except the first month of January. Any questions on the sales tax report? Okay, really quickly, on the ARPA projects, revenue loss, we still have one million five hundred and forty-four thousand three oh five. Other eligibility's, one million seven sixty-seven, seven sixty-nine, for a total of three million three hundred and twelve thousand seventy-four dollars available. It has everything that was included from last month, and there is a five hundred thousand dollar budget amendment this month for using ARP funds as well. So any questions on any of these projects?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I thought I heard the chimes going off. They're fixed now, and I just want to say thanks.
Yeah, sounds good.
It do sound good. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Holbrook on the ARPA funds?
All right. Okay, Group Four appropriations, non-school, there are nine of them. Commissioner Allen would like to pull out nine and ten, so seven, eight, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen, which is the ARPA fund, one for five hundred thousand dollars for the Health Department. I can take these however you want individually.
Add group minus two if you want to pull out.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve as a group, minus nine and ten. Any questions, comments? All right, go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, nine and ten are both from the Library Board. The first one is a budget amendment that increases revenue. It's a grant for eighteen hundred and forty-two dollars and increasing the data processing equipment, eighteen hundred and forty-two. It's for training opportunities grant to purchase wireless access points for the library. It is, that would be the Norris Library, four thousand and one. And the second one is a thousand dollars from the Clinton Library Fund Balance to purchase periodicals. They cut that completely out of their budget this year to make their budget balance, so there, she's taking money from her fund, asking for money from her fund balance to pay for periodicals.
All right, we have a motion to approve both. Is that your second, Commissioner Verran? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve nine and ten. Any questions? Go to the board and vote. Eleven yes, three no, motion passes.
Thank you. And under Group Five appropriations, there is one from Finance for eighty-seven thousand four ninety-four that is coming from unassigned fund balance to pay for Tennessee Risk Management or Workers' Comp Insurance.
All right, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any questions? See, and none, go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. There was no budget amendments under Group Six Transfers. Under Section A Grant Applications, we had two grant applications, one from EMS for fifty-two thousand nine eighteen, and one from the Highway Department to, for two hundred thousand dollars. Neither one require match from the county. We're just asking for approval to apply for these grants.
We have a motion in a second to approve as a group. Any comments or questions or discussion? Go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Section B Longevity Pay, HR Director Kim Whitaker made a, presented a proposal for longevity pay on behalf of Anderson County employees. It was deferred to the Strategic Planning Workshop scheduled in October, so no motion, no action was taken on that. Section C, the Anderson County Health Department, the dental clinic, which Budget Amendment Number Sixteen earlier was five hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds to remodel the dental clinic, to move the dental clinic to the end of the building to allow for more efficient design and layout. We've already approved that one. Section D, the Volunteer Fire Department?
Hold on one second, Robbie. Can we clear the, that's already been...
That budget amendment was approved under Section...
Yeah, can we, was that your intent, Doctor, Commissioner Smallridge? Okay, clear the board. Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, sorry, I got peddling myself there. Section D Volunteer Fire Departments, Commissioner, Commissioner Wondell presented the fire departments, Fire Commission's request for eight volunteer fire departments in the cities for fifty, for their use of the fifty thousand dollars, and that was approved by the Budget Committee. This money's already been approved by commission, this was just their plan of action, how they were going to spend the money, we brought it back to Budget Committee. I guess we should take a vote on, I mean...
Commissioner McCamey?
Did that include the volunteer fire...
It did. It did. Yes, sir. I think, there was eleven, and eight have already submitted their plan.
All right, Commissioner Foster?
So I thought last month when we approved it, it was just to be approved by Budget Committee, I didn't think it was going to have to come back here. We just wanted to run back through the Budget Committee as approving their purchases.
Yes, and we did, that's what those eight were for.
So we don't need a motion on this?
Would you feel more...
I would feel safer if we just made a motion and...
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Wondell, for approval. Any questions, comments, discussion? See, and then go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under Section E, the Board of Education, Dr. Parrott presented a request for one point five million of ARPA funds for wastewater treatment systems in Bryceville and Dutch Valley. That was also deferred to the Strategic Planning Workshop scheduled for October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And in Section F, I gave a solid waste commissioners, their funds update, and I don't know if y'all want me to go over that, or if you have seen it, and that was in the budget packet. I'd be more than happy to, if you want.
I think we're good.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, any other questions for Robbie? All right, see, and none, thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Operations Report, Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no action items, but upon Commissioner Wondell's request, I think he has questioned.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Wondell?
I was reading the minutes there, and I was just curious, on that Strategic Planning Workshop to be held on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, I noticed there's a consulting person there, Kathy Price Consulting will be the consulting agent. What, can somebody explain what that is, or...
Yeah, I'll defer to Commissioner Palmer.
She is a facilitator, we talked about having a facilitator to facilitate this workshop. She has experience in working with county governments, and she has worked with several economic development organizations. She has worked with McMinn County, and she is one of the five people, well, actually six people, that I called, you know, suggestions from people, I called those people and talked to them, and she is the one, her proposal best fit what we are trying to accomplish, and, and that's, she's a consulting facilitator.
So, I guess my next question is...
Okay.
How much is this going to cost us? Where did the proposal go? Did it go through purchasing budget? I'm imagining, I'll be told, that because it's less than the fifty thousand dollar amount, it didn't have to, but regardless, I'd like to know, what is the cost going to be?
Okay, it's seventy-five hundred dollars, and we do have a hard copy, I've got a hard copy in this folder, but I'll be glad to email it. It has gone through, it said purchasing now, and it is, is, the funds are going to be coming from a professional services co, the mayor has graciously, to expedite this, has graciously said that she would pay for it out of her fund, and that's what we're doing right now. And it will be a direct pay, is my understanding, is what was told, what Robbie had said in the operations committee.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for answering questions.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Art's going to leave, but if you would give him just a minute to talk about this dental clinic, to, for some of the new commissioners to know what's going on, and what he does with the schools and stuff, because it's, we was years getting this championed, and how well it works now, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Do you want to wait, or do you? All right.
Could, could I just add to, just to clarify this, to make the announcement, that Strategic Planning Workshop is going to be Thursday, the twenty-sixth, Friday, the twenty-seventh. The times on Thursday are from three to seven, and the times on Friday are from eight to four, and it will be at the conference room at the Health Department. And this, the consultant is coming from Lenore City, so she's fairly local, and, and that's her entire cost.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make that announcement, that seemed like a good time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, before Art speaks here...
Go ahead.
Did you check with CTEST about any expertise that they might have?
I did, I did, and they have, the one person that I talked to didn't, I don't know how to say this right, she didn't answer a lot of the questions. When I explained what we wanted to do, I didn't, I don't think that we got the answers. This, this lady here particularly works, has worked with like McMinn County and some other counties, and she just seemed like what we needed. She was going, since we've not done this in a while, she offered more than what CTEST was offering, just to...
I mean, CTEST probably would, even though we have facilitators, I think they still should be invited, a representative from CTEST, because they, I mean, they, they dealt with every county in the state.
Sure.
And I just feel like if we had somebody from CTEST, even though we have facilitators, if they could send somebody over for a meeting...
Maybe as an extra consulting or something like that?
Yeah.
I can check with them.
And just, I mean, they, you know, they know more about state laws and things like that, and how it applies to counties, so, I think if we had somebody from CTEST, just, if nothing else, just sitting in the audience, that we could kind of pick their brain.
Okay, I can, I can check with them.
And there wouldn't be a charge for it, so, if they can work it into their calendar. Thank you.
All right. Art, you've got the floor.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
All of you, and it's nice to talk to you. I haven't been up to talk since some of you've come on, so I appreciate getting to have a few words. If you've not come by or know about our... If you've not come by or know about our Anderson County Health Department Dental Clinic, and I have to take off the Health Department, because we are, even though we are housed in the Health Department, we are a county dental clinic. And so, we see patients from Anderson County, but because we take Tin Care, we also have to take patients from other counties that are on Tin Care. But our schedule is for Anderson County patients first, and children, of course, come before that. So, we see, we used to see about fifty-fifty children and adults. Since the Tin Care for adults started earlier this year, then we're really increasing a lot in the, in the adult population, and this is causing a backup. We're about three or four months out for those patients, and these are patients who have probably not been to the dentist in many years. Now that Tin Care covers their dental care, they're wanting to come see us. And as you know, we asked about, and you approved of hiring a hygienist, which will help the dentist, because this, these folks have comprehensive problems, you know, and so, being able to, for the hygienist to do the cleaning, the scaling, this will take that off of the dentist, where she can take care of other patients. So, once we get the hygienist on board, then I would say we will greatly increase our numbers, and especially our revenue, because the hygienic care, Tin Care pays very well for us. As some of you may or may not know, we do not accept insurance, except just Tin Care, and then cover kids, because we've never wanted to, you know, cause any issues with the private dental community for those patients, for those dentists. But we have very good support from the dental community, and many of those dentists, over the years, have volunteered at our Emery Valley Dental Clinic, which is at the, at the Dickens Building in Oak Ridge. We have a two-day-a-month clinic there, one for restorative and the other extractions. And those, of course, we're seeing a little bit of a cut in, in the extraction clinic because of the adults that are having Tin Care. They're coming to the Health Department Dental Clinic there. So, with the expansion, the new space, we'll have four operatories. We can use one of those for the hygienic care especially. That will really move things along. But it's based on income, and, and I, I look at our reports. We may have seen twenty patients that day, and we've only took in eighty dollars. What's happened? But they were all on Tin Care. So, then, you know, a few weeks later, then here comes a big check for, for all those patients. So, and we're very pleased with Dr. Hudson. She's doing a wonderful job. She's there four days, and Dr. Tim Babla is there on Fridays. And we have done the Clinton Elementary Schools, and we're fixing to go into the Oak Ridge City Schools. The county schools have another program, but they know we're here to back them up if they need it. And so, but I'm, I'm very excited. I never thought I'd really be around to see the clinic be renovated, because we were just so tickled to have what we had in twenty, in two thousand and five, when we moved in that building when I was the director. So, I thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to help you. I can't talk without my hands. Be glad to.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Commissioner Allen.
How many do you see during, during like a week? How many?
Well, we see on an average of twenty to twenty-four patients a day. And we're five days a week. And, you know, of course, we're dependent on people showing up, and we always double book, sometimes triple.
Yeah.
Some days, you see thirty patients, and some days you see eighteen, so it, you know, it varies.
And there's two doctors that help there?
Yes, one, well.
Are they volunteers?
No, no, they're paid. One, one works four days, and then one works one day a week. So, we have full five-day coverage. And then, they help with the Emery Valley Clinic when I don't have a volunteer dentist to come down there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Palmer.
I had, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to go visit Mr. Miller at the dental clinic and the staff. They are lean and very efficient, and it was just, it was a very nice visit. They do good work. There was full, the, the waiting room was full, and their plans are, are really good, and I felt like that they were making the most use of space and money, and it was just a, a good visit. Thank you for that.
Thank you. We're very, we're very lucky in this county, and thank you, because not many county health departments has a dental clinic, let alone that it's a county dental clinic. Though, there's some that have the state clinics, which they see about eight patients a day, you know, and that's about it. And mostly children, which, you know, is fine, but I, I'm just amazed at how our clinic has grown.
All right, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the, the big things is the opportunity to go into the schools to see children that you'd never see. And Johnny Alley and myself, we used to play basketball over there, and those kids over there, their mouths were so bad. You know, if they got fouled or something, they would just cry. And I remember talking to Mr. Miller about this, and that's something, you know, it's, it's for all the schools, and it's a chance to, to go see kids that'll never be seen before.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
No, it's too bad, but our schools have to take care of the kids many times, and, and so, we're glad to be able to come in and help. And then, I know that in the past, we've even had, you know, the schools have brought kids to us, kids sitting in class hurting. So, I'm sorry, I've talked too much.
No, you're, no, you're good. No, we, Commissioner Smallridge has the floor.
The Emery Valley Clinic, sir, countywide?
Yes, yes. Only, it, it's, it is limited to Anderson County patients. And they pay a small fee if they can. And we have two grants, the Safety Net Grant from the state, one for Emery Valley and one for here in Clinton. And those, those have really helped, because so many times those folks cannot pay. And so, I think last year, at the Clinton Clinic, we received a little over fifty thousand from Safety Net Funds, and, and then in Oak Ridge, I think it was around seventeen thousand. And so, they've added some more programs, which I applied for with the Safety Net, and so, that's, that's adding a few extra thousand a quarter on, on that. And we, we came up with a program about how to try to improve our show rates, and so, we started texting the patients. And I was shocked, you know, sometimes we'll have great turnout, because they respond to the text, and it's on their calendar then, you know.
All right.
Sounds like Tin Care is probably, in terms of revenue, that Tin Care is, is helpful as any.
Yes, if, if we didn't have Tin Care, it would be very difficult, you know, to, to make it. But we did see a lot of adult patients, and they paid what they could over the years.
All right, Commissioner Varen.
Yes, Tennessee hasn't expanded Tin Care or Medicaid. Would something like that really help you all, or do you think you'd be able to see more patients? Or, or how would that affect you?
Well, I, 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 it's my understanding that was, the expansion was to cover adults in, in the Medicaid expansion. That, that had not happened before. And so, that, that is helping, yes, tremendously. But certainly, if there's other, other ways, you know, it is, it is hard, you know, to see many more patients. You know, if we can keep around thirty a day, that would be great. I mean, but who knows? We may get to the point someday we need two dentists, you know, but it, it's, because of, of the need, it's, it's a difficult. It's not just, like, you and I may go to our dentist for regular cleanings and things like that, and these folks have not been in a long time.
Is Emery Valley as backed up as one here in Clinton?
Not quite, it's, because, of course, it's just two times a month. Dr. Lee and Dr. Barton in Oak Ridge, they do the restorative, but their limit, they limit how many they can see, usually six, six patients a month for them. But we will see now, next month, we have the UT resident dentist coming, and they're oral surgeons. So, we try to get as many patients in for that clinic, because they'll stay late in the afternoon if we need it. So, and the mayor's always good to help promote that through her press releases and things. So, we'll, we'll be looking forward to that clinic. We, we can see as many as forty patients that day. And we have four, four chairs down there. All that equipment, it's older, but it's been donated, and it works very well.
Great. Thank you, Art.
Thank you so much. I didn't mean to take up your time.
I know, good information.
I always like to brag on it. It was all, it was always a special program for me, even as Director of the Health Department, so I'm still hanging on. You tell me to go home. Thank you.
All right. Chairman Isbell, do you have anything else?
No, sir. And thank you for indulging me on that.
Yes, absolutely. All right, next, the Nominating Committee Report. I guess I will go through this quickly, if, if there's no objection to, to me doing this. We met on September the eleventh. We made a motion to defer the election of Chairman and Vice Chairman to the next meeting. That motion did pass. Commissioner Anderson made a motion to approve James Ferguson to continue serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals with a term expiring. Nine twenty-eight motion passed to full commission for approval. If it's okay with the board, can, do we want to read through all of this, then?
Approve as a group?
Or do you want to go individually? Approve them, okay. So, we've got a motion to approve all of these as a group, and just to highlight just two changes, is that Commissioner Wondell and I will be switching operations and budget, and then Commissioner Smallridge and Jaeger, or Commissioner Smallridge will now be on nominating. Those will be the committee changes. So, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Palmer?
I just want point of clarification. We are just voting on the committees, the nominating, not the boards, but just the committees.
The committees and the boards that needed addressed and nominated.
Okay, so, the, just these board members that are being added.
That is correct.
Because I have issues with the board paper that we got.
Okay. Any other questions? Go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no. And that concludes the nominating report. Next, we have the Fire Commission Report. Chairman Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said earlier, the, the report's with you. I'll just ask that we accept it into the minutes. There is no major items on that, and again, the Fire Commission would like to thank the body for their support on the ARP funds. Very appreciative. So, I'll make a motion to accept the report as written and presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are you wanting to do the same, Commissioner Wondell, for the animal advisory?
Yes, I would like to do that as well. Just make a motion to accept the Animal Advisory Committee minutes as presented.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we will have a meeting next month. I don't have the date in front of me, but I'll, I'll get it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Schools.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, Mr. Mays and Ms. Amanda Griffith, our condolences, one or the other, but you all will do a great job on that. I know y'all have, have seen the report, but just a couple of things I wanted to highlight since, since then. We need to celebrate Claxton Elementary School, Clinton High School, and Grand Oaks High School, Grand Oaks Elementary School for being recognized as a Level Five school again this year in growth. This is the third year of Clinton High School being a Level Five. We have, we also had three schools that were Level Four, five schools that received a Level Three, two schools received a Level Two, and two schools received a Level One. Just let you know, as the achievement gets higher, it's a whole lot harder to get that growth. And so, we do know that a Level Three is, these students got a year's worth of growth, and so, we're excited about that. Achievement is still under appeal. I am sure every year we have reward schools, and we will have them again this year, but that is still embargoed, so we won't know till probably November. Just a few things about student enrollment. We're at three seventy-five in kindergarten, which is up about sixty students from last year. Last year was probably one of our lowest numbers, but overall, enrollment's down about a hundred and sixty students this year. So, we are looking at working with the budget and to make those necessary adjustments. But enrollment in English-language learners continues to rise. We've had to add another new teacher. We're up to seven teachers now with that. So, every time you get twenty students, you have to add another teacher. Some other good news, April Meyer, she is the principal of Clinton Middle School. She is one of the top nine principals in the state for the overall principal of the year. So, that was out of a hundred and forty-seven districts. She's now in the top nine, so I, I think the, I think she's going to win, just to let you know, because she is doing a great job over there. Yep.
She's awesome.
Building projects, September the twenty-sixth, we meet with the design team and MBI on Claxton Elementary School at one o'clock. Then at two o'clock, we meet with USDA at the same place to work on getting that funding in place. So, we're excited about that. The CTE building at Clinton is scheduled to go before the City Planning Committee in October on the ninth, and hopefully, we'll have bids by the end of the month. We are working on the softball field diligently. They were over there today digging, so we're hoping that. We still are waiting on the city to release that permit on the building, so we hope to get that. Life Development Center, I know some people asked about it. Oak Ridge did get a appraisal on it for three hundred and fifteen thousand. We really believe that appraisal's low, and we're going to work on trying to get another one. But I think that would be a good thing for the Life Development Center to be under Oak Ridge, since we do not use it anymore, and it would be, it's kind of a, to get it off of our plate. So, I will take any questions.
All right. Commissioner Foster.
One, my first question is, when will they announce the winner of the Principal of the Year?
That comes sometime in October. There's a, there's a, between October and November, sometime in there, yep. And they'll go, we really won't know, we will, we will go with her down to Nashville. They'll have a, a big celebration for all nine of those, and then they will do that. They'll have Principal of the Year, Supervisor of the Year, and overall Technology Person of the Year. So, we will know that sometime in October. Just to let you know, a few years ago, I was the state winner Supervisor of the Year, so we do have a winner in the state, so. That was a big deal, you know.
And my second question is, have y'all had, you know, COVID? You hear that cases are up? Have y'all seen any in the school?
No. They really don't tell us whether they have COVID or not, but our attendance in both students and in staff right now, still good.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But Perry, explain to us what the Level Five school is.
Okay, if a level, on a Level Three in growth means you, if you're on a racetrack, that means that student went all the way around the racetrack. Wherever they started at, they made a year's worth of achievement growth.
Okay.
A Level Four means they made a hundred and twenty percent of that. A Level Five means they made almost a year and a half to year and three-quarters of growth. So, so it means that the students really did a great job on that.
And what is growth defined as?
Growth is defined as when they start at a grade level and how much they need to make to get to be able to go to the fourth grade level. So, if you're at third grade, you move to fourth grade, or fourth to fifth, fifth to sixth. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Parrot.
Alright. Uh, Commissioner McCamey?
Dr. Parrot, Clinton has a home football game this Friday?
Yes.
Do you know who they play?
They play, they play some, I don't know, some, somebody called Oak Ridge. That's what I think. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
I've seen somebody had a shirt on, but I was going to ask him, but he left. We can, we can aggravate him now.
He was removed by rules.
Yeah. I predict that it's going to be a great ballgame.
Yes.
Yes. And nobody's going to get hurt. That's what we want.
I'm half tempted to recognize Commissioner Smallridge with his Oak Ridge roots.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, Dr. Parrot, during budget, I think we discussed, uh, some safety, technology, safety issues that you all have. Can you explain this? Do we have this, uh, button where teachers can alert to a, a local classroom problem? Or a, or a school-wide?
So, right now, what we do is we have it on the computer. So, they have a button. We don't have that on the app yet. What we're looking at is two different ones. Is, are we going to put it on a phone to where they have it? Because everybody carries a phone. Or is it going to be on a lanyard with a little button around that? So, that's what we're looking into. Uh, we're meeting with ESG on Thursday to kind of finalize those plans. The other thing is that with that safety is putting, uh, it's called intruder film. I guess that's the right word for it. To put film on all of the doors and the windows, everything on the first floor, I guess. We don't have any second-floor schools, so it'd be everything. And that will be a four, four-to-five-minute, I guess that's what they call it. I- if you start shooting that window, and it'll last four to five minutes before they can get their way to break through that. So. And then the other one is, is a, uh, one of the things that if you look at what is happening is with safety, the people that are doing it, they're kind of getting, uh, uh, a little more out there. What they've been doing is trying to pull fire alarms. So, if a fire alarm is pulled, we tell students, you automatically leave. So, they're looking at, so if it is an intruder, instead of the fire alarm going off, we can push a button and there'll be blue lights. So, it'll be more of a, uh, deterrent to them. So, we're trying to figure out ways to make sure our students are safe. We actually have on, uh, Winston High, we have a roundtable discussion with one of the local TV stations. We're going to talk about student safety and things like that. So, I think all of those things come into, uh, come into play. Also is, uh, air, a few years back, as you know, we have, we have automatic door locks on all of our buildings and our classrooms. So, I can swipe this to get in. Well, there's a card, that's a red card, that certain people can have in the school. And if they take that red card and swipe it, it automatically locks the school down. And it, it will report it to the SRO and to nine-one-one. Nine-one-one, if you walk into nine-one-one, they have a whole, they can see every one of our schools. They've got the cameras to see all of our schools, so they're into our Vigilon system. So, we're trying to get all of that. We, we've got little pieces here, so what we're trying to do is put it all together to make it better.
Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Dr. Parrot, to the security side of it, I'll say that, uh, that's true. I went to pick up our granddaughter on Friday at Dutch Valley. First time I've ever had a chance to kind of go over there. Uh, they did a great job. Almost didn't get to pick her up, but I had to write credentials, so I was able to get her. Uh, so, really impressed with how they manage, uh, that traffic flow to pick up the kids. It was pretty cool. Next question was, I think you answered this before, but the flu shots, it's going to be made available for all of our kids?
The flu shots will. They're, they will be starting the first of October.
And that's a choice that they can make if they want them to be provided for free?
Be provided for free, yes, to anybody that wants them in our school system, for employees and for students.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. And then, um, I did attend the, uh, Anderson County School Board meeting this week, and I was impressed with the way everything went. Obviously, I was there for one of the items, which is the softball field, and I'll continue to stay on top of that, and I appreciate you and the school board making a commitment to see that it gets done. And if there's anything we can do to help expedite that, I certainly hope you'll ask.
That one point five million I asked for, really go a long way.
Well, I, I didn't want to say it the night you asked, but I was going to say the same thing to you. If the softball field's done with all the facilities, I'll vote for that and make it as fast as, as fast as, as fast as I could hit the button, I guarantee it. But I know we're working on it, and we're just, but one thing I wanted to say about the, uh, school board meeting that really impressed me, and I unfortunately don't get a lot of time to ever come by there, and, um, I, I, the student board members. It's Audrey Wood from Anderson County High School and Ansley Barker from Clinton. Uh, I was very impressed with how they represented their schools, their presentations, the items they brought before the school board. Uh, they were very prepared. It wasn't just, you know, say a few words and sit down. Uh, I was really impressed with both of them, so thank you for doing that, and please pass that on to those two young ladies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, anything else for Dr. Parrot? Alright, thank you, Dr. Parrot.
Please let me know if you need something.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, um, congratulations to you and Commissioner Vandergriff.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you to Commissioner Anderson for your leadership, and thank you to Commissioner Bowe for your service as vice chairman. And I just want to, yeah, I don't think I've lived through, unless my memory has failed me, three, uh, wonderful candidates up for, uh, chairman at one time. So, um, I know that was a lot of tension, and I want to congratulate you just for leadership. So, leadership is not for the faint of heart, and all of you are leaders. And if you'll indulge me, I, I was just thinking about, um, you know, Teddy Roosevelt gave a wonderful speech that was very inspirational, and sometimes it's just good to read it as a reminder. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who never know victory nor defeat." And that really is, for all of us, you know, we each have our views and our projects and the things we want to accomplish, but all of you, um, you know, sometimes we fall short, sometimes we win. But all of you are to be commended for stepping out there and being a leader, because it is not an easy job. It's not always a winning day. So, I just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you.
We did the suicide prevention awareness month. Uh, the next item on the agenda, and these come via recommendations from the water board. I have, um, supported the reappointment to the Anderson County Water Authority per recommendation by ACWA of Zenith Ricky Rose with a term expiring nine twenty-twenty-seven, and Jack Shelton, term expiring nine twenty-twenty-seven.
We have a motion, uh, by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner McCamey. Any questions for the mayor? Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I'm just curious, I'm certainly supporting these two individuals, no question. What, what, what is the role for the county with the Anderson County Water Authority? I mean, I, I, I just kind of want to get that piece figured out.
Um, well, that would be more of a legal question for Jay, because I don't know truly. Um, I know this was created as an authority, uh, back in the day with a merger. Um, and that happened via private act. So, um, I know that it's considered a governmental entity. The mayor does have the appointment authority, but I don't know where else the government kind of steps in, since they're an authority. So, Jay may have.
Mayor, you did a wonderful job.
Oh, okay.
It's about as good as I can do. If you remember, we had Anderson County Utility Board years ago. They merged with North Anderson County Utility District. Uh, this body put together a private act, went down to, passed two-thirds here, went down to Nashville, passed, came back. We ratified it with two-thirds vote. They are, uh, somewhat autonomous, with the sole exception is that our mayor appoints the board. Any questions on that arrangement?
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so what we have is, the mayor has authority to appoint two board members?
All of them.
Oh, you appoint all the board members? And then if our citizens have an issue with the water authority, how, 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 does commission play a role in that? I mean, I'm, I'm just, it always seems like it's too autonomous to me sometimes when there's an issue. You know, I, I just, I just want to understand how the appointment of the board, what, what, what authority does the mayor have, other than just appointing some board members?
That's really, that's really it. Now, if citizens do contact my office, uh, you know, I will reach out to the water authority, try to facilitate either an answer or remedy. Uh, they do have monthly meetings, and citizens can go. I've been to those meetings where citizens, and they usually will put actually the citizens up, up front, even without this new change in the state law. They'll just move them to the front of the agenda to try to address, um, the issue. I know, so for instance, we had, um, a recent issue, and, um, several citizens reached out, and the water authority actually has implemented a policy change, uh, regarding the installation of water lines or the connecting, where they used to allow private contractors to be able to do that, but because the private contractor for the subdivision took so long, and it would only have taken their own trained crew about an hour and a half, now they've, their board has moved away from allowing that. So, it's just best for, um, I mean, they try to be respectful. Uh, I know the water authority has a, a great respect for the county. There have been many partnerships over the years. For instance, the extension of water lines and all of that. So, I mean, it's, I, I guess that's more of the working relationship, is they, you know, depend on us, um, for, you know, they understand that they are representing the county, and they're trying to provide services to the county, so.
So, that, one last thing, and I appreciate all of it.
Sure.
The CDBG grant Savage Gaugat Garden, is that something that they're handling?
Um, so, yes, it is. And that one has taken an especially long time, because basically what happened is you had, uh, COVID happen, then you had all the infrastructure projects. Um, there was, um, some extra environmental that was required. Then they also did some negotiations with Halsdale Powell. H- Halsdale Powell, where they actually had more water lines there than, uh, either knew. And so, there were some negotiations about Halsdale Powell doing some of the work in Anderson County. So, as soon as, um, we execute this amendment for the extension, we are ready to go to bid. Everything is, is already done, and just awaiting that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak.
Alright, we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next, and I put in there, I won't read all of this for you unless you want me to. I attached the relevant statute showing, uh, the county legislative bodies appointing authority and the requirements under the law. So, the Board of Health does have, uh, positions on it. For instance, the county mayor, the director of schools that are there by statute. The rest of these, um, are long-serving members, and, um, they have just requested that they be reappointed.
We have a motion to approve as a group?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, um, I'm requesting a motion to approve letter of conditions and loan resolution USDA Form RD nineteen forty-two forty-seven for the purpose of an animal shelter to serve an area lawfully within our jurisdiction to serve. And all of those, uh, documents are in your agenda packet. In addition, I initially had to sign a letter of intent to meet the conditions, and that was, uh, based on a resolution passed by this body. And what that did is, in, once you sign a letter of intent, then the USDA sets that money aside. Uh, then that triggers a whole nother set of next steps, which these resolu- this resolution and the letter of intent, I mean, uh, not the letter of intent, the letter of conditions, um, is the next step in the approval process.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, and a second by Commissioner Isbell for approval. Uh, Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, uh, thanks for that information. I've been kind of looking over this. It's up to five-point-nine million that we can borrow.
Yes.
I guess one, one of the questions I had, it, 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 it had it spelled out here, what those funds were kind of going to be targeted for. And I was wondering, i- is, because I read two things. One, it says under section A for project budget, uh, project costs, development and construction, four-point-seven-four-five million. Development and construction. And then I saw somewhere else where if the money comes through, that we're going to have to go get a construction loan?
Yes, so that's what would go through finance committee. We would actually have to go, um, through that borrowing process and how USDA works, and this is kind of, same thing at the Bryceville Library. You have, it's basically interim financing. So, they will pay, um, the USDA will pay, let me back up. There are a couple, there are a couple of ways of doing it. So, for instance, when we go to pay, uh, during the interim financing portion, the USDA loan can pay any interest during that interim period. Or Anderson County could choose to pay interest, and then that, that would be coming off the bottom line. But yes, it will have to go through finance committee. It goes through that process. Once the animal shelter is completed, and all the final costs are there, then you close on your USDA loan, and then the loan, the, the funds from USDA pay off your construction loan. And then you're, you're set. You're locked in. And then the county, at that point in time, post-construction with USDA closure, that's when Anderson County would start paying principal and interest.
Okay.
They are, uh, forty years, um, no prepayment. If we don't expend all the money, we can reduce the amount. If commission, I know one commissioner said he would like to come up with a way to put down something, five-hundred thousand or a million. I mean, if we did something like that, then, you know, then that gets, the, all gets lowered.
So, and I appreciate the explanation. So, the way I think and understand it, USDA will give us a, sort of a guaranteed loan?
Yes.
The, uh, cost to build it loan is the same money, right? We're not going to get additional funds, correct? Not the five-point-nine-plus building money, right?
Correct. Yes.
And then the start date is going to be interesting, because it goes a year from the start date, have to have construction started, which I know you know. But the only other thing, and I'll leave it, because I know this is just to get the ball rolling, I guess, but I, I'd like to, if you could, next month, when, if you have the chance to come to the, uh, Animal Care Advisory Committee, if you could, I want to open that up just for you to come in and tell us how you envision, uh, not only the construction, but also the operations, the maintenance. What do you envision?
Okay.
How's that going to be funded? What's your thoughts? And we, we, none of, no one on the committee has a grand illusion of, we're going to tell you what to do. We'd like to hear you and what your thoughts are.
Okay. And we actually had to put into the application process all of those things. So, they don't want to approve it unless you have, you know, how a lot of those things are going to happen.
Thank you.
Um, and then the other thing on the construction loan, that will require, so right now, we're only in, um, we don't have, we have a schematic design, but we don't have full construction documents.
Okay.
So, when we go to finance committee to do the construction loan, we have to have a construction document with a bid amount. So, that's the safeguard there. You're actually, what is this? So that's the safeguard there, you're actually, what is this actually going to cost?
I feel like I'm breaking all these rules already, I'm waiting for Foster to kind of hammer me down, and also Chairman, but where would this be built at? In Clint, over a Clinton property?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're the dog, you're the dog park.
Well, yeah, he grabbed his rules, I didn't know it was.
I've seen him over there. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's one thing that's in that contract that I think the people at home, and all Americans, would be good to know, is the Build America by America Act. The borrower must comply with provisions of the Build America by America Act. The act requires that none of the funds made available for federal financial assistance program for infrastructure may be obligated for a project unless all of the iron, steel, manufactured products and construction materials used in a project are produced in the United States.
Good deal. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, this has been a very long road with this, and I really appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all I have, unless there are any other questions.
Any questions for Mayor Frank? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Law Director.
Mr. Chairman, I have no action out of this other congratulations, except for my. But I do want to thank Commissioner Vow and Commissioner Anderson, wonderful people, did a fantastic job. Unless anybody has any questions on my written report or any other legal issue, I'll sit down.
Any questions for the Law Director? Seeing none, thank you. All right, we'll move off of committee and board reports, already addressed that. Any new business come for the commission? Commissioner Isbell?
Yeah, just really an announcement. And one thing is, I need to correct myself about new commissioners, because as of today, they're junior commissioners.
Yeah, that's right.
Congratulations. And Friday, the 22nd, at 12 noon, at the Coal Miners Museum slash City Hall, we will be revealing the Dean Dillon's marker on the Tennessee Music Pathway, and all commissioners are included. If anybody don't know who Dean Dillon is, he's supposed to be the greatest songwriter of all time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Any old business?
Mr. Chairman, I have no action in your business.
Madam.
Division Two Court will be holding the 30-year anniversary of the Division Two Court in Oak Ridge on Friday, at the court at 10 a.m. So anybody that wants to attend that.
This coming Friday?
Yes, the 22nd.
It's coming Friday.
And I'd like to say, go Wildcats.
Strike that from the record, please. Commissioner Palmer.
I just have a question, I guess, and I'm not sure where to ask it, since we've got three line items that says committees, reports. So I'd say old business, I guess. But I just wanted to ask, if you'll remember back in April, I had asked that the library board meeting minutes be corrected and put in the proper format. And if you remember, I gave that to the Secretary of the Board, and I even followed up with a phone call and asked if there was anything that needed to be, you know, any questions or anything like that. And we have not received any library board minutes since then. So I guess my question is, is are we going to receive those minutes? And I just think it's important that the commissioners know what's going on. I'm not trying to stir up trouble or anything, but I think the commissioners need to know what's going on at these library board meetings, in case they don't. And at bare minimum, those minutes will give us that information. Things are, I was hoping that this would be resolved at the library board level, but I'm not sure if it can be. The Law Director has worked tirelessly and has given recommendations, and I'm not sure if commission can avoid being involved in it. So I just want the commissioners to at least know what's going on in the meetings through those minutes. And, and I'm not sure if I did something wrong. When I talked to the secretary, assured me that he was, knew how to do the minutes and had it under control. But he did confess he wasn't real sure how to get them here for. We just need to ask for those.
Commissioner Wondell, if you'd like, I'd like to let Chairman Anderson address it real quick.
I've followed up with him a couple times, and I think he was, I think he maybe talked back and forth with Commissioner Palmer and was, was working on him. So I think he's, maybe I just need to prompt him again to see if he's got, if he's got the corrections made and forward them either to an ed or a meeting, or really get on the agenda. I think the regional, the regional board also gets a copy and keeps that, so he may, they may just be going to the wrong place.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, a couple announcements. One is the city of Clinton, this is a community fire safety event, I think we all got an email. It's a touch a truck Saturday, October 21st. Again, this is countywide, anyone's welcome, any municipality. It's really gotten big, and it's Saturday, October 21st, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Anderson County Fairgrounds. And then the Claxton Volunteer Fire Department will have their trunk or treat on the 28th of October down at the park area there in Claxton. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, one last thing, since we talked about the football.
Yes.
If it's okay. The gentleman that left here with that shirt on said something out, while I was walking out to the mailbox, and he, he said something about, well, didn't y'all buy new flags in the city of Clinton for your team? I said, no, that's probably 10 years ago, we don't have any new flags. He said, yeah, I could tell, you got straw now for representing your team, and that's about what they're made out of, is straw. So I'm hoping that the parents and these kids get the message that there's a commissioner here that believes the Clinton High School is made out of straw. And that's the message I hope every kid at Clinton gets when they step on that field, that they're made of straw. Thank you.
We'll make posters and put it in their locker room. All right, Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the reigning state champions, the Anderson County Mavericks, we would love to play both teams. I think we're finally going to get a chance to play Clinton again, so we're certainly looking forward to that. I expect the camaraderie to continue when that day comes. Would also like to announce that tomorrow night at 6:30, we will be having our ribbon cutting for the new Bryceville Volunteer Fire Department. It has been a long time coming, this board has been more than gracious in helping that fire department, and we are great, very grateful for that. Would love to invite everybody to attend that tomorrow evening at 6:30 at our new location.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but did you get the score of the charity softball game between the seven?
Yeah, so it was Anders, the, the good guys, 26, and the city of Clinton, 12.
Thank you, Ms. Vow. I'll proceed to it to Isaiah.
Yes, it was a great, it was a fun day.
It was awesome.
A lot of fun. Commissioner Palmer.
One last announcement, sorry. October the 7th, it's a Saturday at 9 a.m., we will have our third annual prayer walk here downtown Clinton, and that's on a Saturday morning at 9 a.m.
Good deal.
October 7th. No. It's right before the Antique Festival that weekend. This will be our third year having that, so.
Good deal.
Guys can attend.
Any other announcements? Mayor Frank?
Is this working? Okay. Just real quickly, I wanted to share that Anderson County's annual comprehensive financial report, you know, it's the year prior, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, qualifies for GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So I just wanted to point that out and congratulate the Director Holbrook and the Finance Office and, and County Commission as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other announcements? Any old business? We have a motion to adjourn? We adjourned.
Sure you don't want any of this? Any of this booty?
8:30, huh?
A top drop, one.
Sir? I tried to hit his horn like this, cut it off.